Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for attending the Communities, Parks and Leisure Committee today. This meeting today is open to the public and welcome to the questioners who we will be hearing from later today as well. There are no items on today's agenda that contain any exempt information. This meeting is being webcast and recordings will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. Please can I request that mobile phones and other noisy equipment can be switched into silent mode so we don't disturb the conduct of the meeting? There is no fire test plan for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the town hall staff and the assembly point is Tudor Square. So now we will go through the committee so we can all introduce ourselves. I am councillor Curtis Crossthorn and I am the chair of this committee and I got my name right today. I'll start on my left.
Yeah, good afternoon councillor Alan Hooper, councillor for West Ecclesfield Ward.
Simon Clement-Jones, councillor for Beechfield Green Award.
Councillor Peter Gilbert, councillor for Ecclesall Ward.
That's probably going to work. It's councillor Brian Homshaw, councillor for Brumhill and Sheriffal Ward.
Good afternoon, I'm Mike Chaplin, my councillor for Southie Ward and I'm substituting for one of our colleagues today.
Councillor Abila Mauana for Park and Harbithone.
Councillor Mary Lee, Donald Ward and I'm also substitute.
Councillor Tony Downing for Mosborough Ward.
Thank you, everybody. If I can ask officers to introduce themselves when you are presenting your items today. So item one is apologies for absence. We have received apologies from councillor Moynihan, councillor McGowan and councillor Elliott. We've got councillor Gilbert, Chaplin and Lee in their absence substituting today. So welcome to the committee. Item two, exclusions of the public and press. This meeting today is open to the public as there are no items on the agenda containing any exempt information. So we move on to declarations of interest. Do any members of the committee wish to declare an interest in any items of business on today's agenda? No, perfect, thank you. And item four, minutes of the previous meeting. So we are being asked to approve the minutes of the Communities, Parks and Leisure Policy Committee on the 30th of June 2025. These can be found from page 11 of the Agenda Pack. Are those agreed as a true and accurate representation of the meeting? Excellent, thank you. Those were agreed. So on to item five, this is public questions and petitions. We have received one remit question and six agenda-related questions for today's meeting. So we'll start with the remit question. As I said, one question was received relating to the remit of the committee. That was from Mr Cronshaw. The question and the original answer to that has been published on the council's website and is in the documentation. We then received one supplementary from Mr Cronshaw to that and he will receive a written response within the next 10 days. We received six questions relating to the agenda of today's committee meeting. So we will start with those attending who will be addressing the meeting today. So if I could first welcome Tessa to ask your question, please. Thank you.
Hello, hi. So I'm Tessa Lupton. I'm here today on behalf of Ecclesall Rangers regarding Lim Lane playing fields. They've been dealing with a prolific amount of dog fouling for years. It's not, it's just not right that they're having to pick up numerous piles of dog muck before every match and it's certainly not safe for the children playing there either. My question is, how can commercial dog walkers that walk or exercise multiple dogs off lead realistically be aware of all dog fouling? Would it not be the responsible thing for the council to do to limit the amount of dogs that commercial dog walkers can have off the lead at one time? Is it the responsibility of the council to safeguard green open spaces where children play such as playing fields and parks from the dangers of dog fouling? Will the council bring in a licensing system to prevent irresponsible commercial dog walkers from spoiling our green open spaces and making them unsafe for children and other users? We welcome the committee's proposal and actions today that think that more stringent measures should be taken to prevent, to protect playing fields and children across the city, such as using a public space protection order and having mandatory registration for professional dog walkers. Thank you.
Thank you for your question. We do recognise the growing impact of increased dog ownership and commercial dog walking on our parks, woodlands and countryside. The concerns you've raised particularly around dog fouling and safeguarding of green space and the need for responsible commercial practices are central to the refreshed approach that we are considering later today. Managing multiple dogs off lead is challenging, especially in monitoring dog fouling, as you said. To address this, the registration scheme for commercial dog walkers is being proposed. Registered businesses will agree to comply with the code of conduct and specific terms and conditions, including limits to the number of dogs walked at any one time and requirements for adequate qualifications such as canine first aid and insurance as well. This scheme aims to promote best practice, support reputable businesses and reduce the environmental and safety risks associated with irresponsible dog walking. It also enables the council to better manage the volume of dogs being walked commercially to set clear expectations and behaviour in public spaces. With regards to safeguarding green spaces, it is the council's responsibility to look after and safeguard our green spaces, especially those used by children, as you mentioned today. The proposed code of conduct is designed to protect green spaces and wildlife, ensure access and enjoyment for all visitors, promote responsible dog ownership, including waste disposal, that means putting it in a bin and not in a tree, address ecological and recreational impacts, particularly in sensitive, ecologically sensitive areas. While the current proposal is voluntary, we do retain the options to introduce licensing and enforcement measures in the future if, if we think that they are needed. This is the first step in the process and I think it opens up a conversation that we can have further down the road as well. So I do hear your requests about the PSPO and we will be monitoring what other, other places across the country do because bringing something such as a PSPO in is incredibly expensive and so we wouldn't want to do so without the data and the conversations that we need to back that up beforehand. So as I say, this is the start of, of a process on commercial dog walking and the Dog Walkers' Code of Conduct and we will continue to monitor as we go forward. But thank you again for coming today and asking your questions and do let us know any feedback that you have if this is voted through later today. So thank you. And next, I believe we have Helena.
Hi, my name is Helena Prasiliades, I'm a resident of Nether Green and very, she's very close to the Porter Valley and I'm a member, a keen member of Friends and Porter Valley Conservation Group. And you may have in part addressed some of what I'm, I am going to ask. And so my question is, will the committee consider the harm done by the many dogs off lead in places like the Porter Valley, i.e. erosion, soil compaction, degradation and loss of riverside plants, due to off path trampling often as the dogs enter and exit the river, disturbance of wildlife and habitat, disturbance to other visitors? And will the committee, sorry. Will the committee take into account national and international literature, which is now widely available, confirming these negative impacts by dogs, especially off lead, particularly in areas of nature conservation? And will the committee consider following the many examples of nature reserve areas throughout the UK and including in the new Dog Walkers' Code, a requirement for dogs to be kept on short leads in places like the Porter Valley Nature Reserve? Additionally, will there be a commitment alongside friends and volunteers to active public communication about why this is needed and for example where there might be non-local nature reserve areas nearby where dogs could still exercise off lead, communications to help ensure that this intervention will be understandable and acceptable to visitors?
Thank you for that. So yeah, thank you for your question and did you say that you were a volunteer in Porter Valley, so thank you for volunteering there as well. I think that this, this report does recognise the environmental impact of dog walking on sites such as the Porter Valley Local Nature Reserve, particularly with off lead dogs. The concerns are echoed in national and international literature, as you mentioned, and to be fair, it's something that I've only recently learnt about myself and it's been really fascinating learning about all of this as we've progressed this work through the committee and all the briefings we've had. So I think the awareness side of what we are discussing later today is the most important part of it in, to my mind, because people won't follow the code of conduct if they don't understand why it's there. So I think the awareness of it is going to be really important. So we will be working with messages like take the lead, pause on paths, take it home. I think that the, the team will be assessing those and how they work as time goes on and I'm sure that they will be open to lots of suggestions as, as well of nice puns. I think the code of conduct for dog walkers is being developed in partnership as well with the land managers, including Sheffield and Rotherham Wildlife Trust and the Eastern Moors Partnership. I think their input on all of this is incredibly important. So we are committed to developing, cut off, there we go, communication materials that explain the rationale behind the scheme if it's voted through later today and to guide dog owners to appropriate areas. These materials will be informed by insights and the local friends groups, ecologists, commercial dog walking businesses as well and dog walkers themselves. Because the aim is to ensure that the messaging is inclusive, informed, effective and helps visitors understand where off lead exercise is and isn't appropriate. Because we want, we all enjoy our green spaces, don't we? And we want them to be enjoyed by as many people and, and dogs where appropriate as possible. So while the current proposed approach is voluntary, as I mentioned earlier, we will be monitoring the data and the impact of everything we do to see what is needed to make sure that we do safeguard our green spaces and ecologically significant spaces for generations to come as well. So thank you again for your question and as I said earlier, please do feedback to us if this is voted through later today because we need, we need to hear the real life experiences of people if, if this is implemented. So thank you. So we have also received agenda-related questions from several people who are not here today to ask their questions. So we've received questions from Ibra Hussain, Sue Jackson, Marilyn Small and Shaw and they will all receive their responses within 10 days and they, the questions and the responses will be included in the minutes and documentation for this meeting. I think I need to say as well that we've received zero petitions and zero statements for today's meeting. So thank you to the members of public who came to ask your questions today and we'll move on to the next item of business, which is members' questions, which is a quick one because we've received none. So item seven, work programme. This can be found from page 17 of the Agenda Pack and Joanne Cooper is the presenting officer.
Thank you, Chair. Just as it is in the report, there's quite a few items that have been added which have come out of the work programming sessions that we had in August. They've all been added to the work programmes. Most of them have got dates now. There's a couple that haven't but we are aware of those and we're working on getting dates for those and that's all I've got to mention, I think.
Great, thank you for that. I'd just like to bring in Tom Smith for a moment to discuss the communities aspect of the year ahead report because that's on his next meeting's agenda. Tom? Caught him off guard.
It is working. Thank you, Chair. I'm Tom Smith, Director of Customer Experience in Communities. So just to say, there is clearly a year ahead report on the agenda later on which covers parks and leisure services. That doesn't cover the remainder of Communities, Parks and Leisure Services, a big chunk of which are with me in terms of my, my responsibilities within communities. We have had the informal session outside of committee to look at the forward plan but unfortunately we don't manage to get that written up and we've put that on the agenda for this committee for November. Just I guess to give you a quick early doors insight into some of the things that will be coming forward on that. So members will clearly be aware that the community strategy is one of the bigger pieces of work we're currently working on within communities and that will be at Strategy and Resources Committee in October. Out of that strategy, once, if that's agreed by Strategy and Resources Committee, will be a number of community related pieces of work. That will include things like our approach to community development going forward and how we support communities in the future and links to our shared prosperity funded activities, work around community buildings and our local assets, our intent around locality working and neighbourhood governance and also a number of pieces around our kind of performance and how we monitor performance through this committee. So a group of work related to the community strategy, once that has hopefully been agreed within Strategy and Resources Committee in October. We've then got a number of pieces of work in community safety. So the PSPO update will be back in this committee in November. I think that's already on the work programme. But also in the community safety area, we are doing work with the police on something called Clear Hole Build, which some of you will be aware of, which is a very local response, supporting the police in, in work, at work around organised crime and our intent is to bring a report back to committee on that. We'll be bringing a report around our Prevent Below Thresholds pilot, which the pilot was put in place following the awful events in Southport in terms of that not being ideologically related in terms of that activity. So what we now have is a process in place that allows people to be referred in to prevent for incidents or where they have, where we have concerns that are not based on ideology and we're currently piloting that in Sheffield and really proud to be doing that. And then we'll also be bringing some work around serious violent crime. I know everybody's interested in that in terms of the city and the concerns around knife crime in particular in the city. We'll be bringing a piece of work forward on that. In local area committees, local area committees aren't directly accountable to this committee. They're accountable to full council but we know they are delivering a lot of community-based work. They're doing a lot of community development work and supporting members in terms of locality delivery and delivery of your priorities. So the intent is to bring a report to this committee about the activity that's been delivered in local places by local area committees, just so everybody can see it and for some visibility. And linked to that, we'll also be bringing an update in terms of the work we're doing in Page Hall and Grange Thaw, which is a really useful model, I guess, in terms of our intent around locality and neighbourhood working and integrated working across services. And then finally on cost of living and asylum, which also sits within that particular area of work, we'll be bringing an update around asylum and migration and that will include an update around the work we're doing in terms of the city of Sanctuary. Some work around cohesion that is currently taking place in the city, again linked to the community strategy work. And then last but absolutely not least, there are some changes coming in terms of the Household Support Fund, which is a central government grant, which was put in place actually for Covid. That's going to be changed in terms of that funding and our intent is to bring a paper on that as well to set out how we'll be spending the new Crisis and Resilience Fund, linked to the review of cost of living. So hopefully that just gives you a bit of an idea of the work that's taking place. We'll be enshrining that within the report for November. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, that was really useful. Does anybody have any comments or questions on this item? Councillor Homshaw?
So I don't think I really addressed this to Tom, but it's, it's about the Green and Blue Task and Finish Group, which is just being established. And I don't spot it on the agenda for, as having a date, so I wondered whether that was actually going to turn up within this coming year or not.
Lisa?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I'm Lisa, for Director of Parks, Leisure and Libraries. It will appear on the work programme as a Green and Open Spaces Strategy Review. I'm going to quickly look at the work programme. I do believe it is on there either early in the new year, yeah, I'm looking at Ruth, yeah, or as a date to be determined, but I think it's on, yeah, but it'll appear, councillor Homshaw, it'll appear as a Green and Open Spaces Strategy Review. March 26th, thanks, Tom.
Great, thank you. Simon?
Thank you, thank you for the report, Tom. I mean, obviously I'm a local area committee chair and I've had some involvement in the, in the, in the community strategy work. My, I suppose my question is, is around the kind of distribution of community work across the city. When I represent Lowages Baymore and Jordan Thorpe and in my opinion, the council's attention has not been on Lowages Baymore and Jordan Thorpe for the last 20 years. And I'm sure there are other areas in the city that I don't know about that have also missed out on, I say the, the, the community work that's gone on in other areas of the city that are as deprived or, or less deprived than, than Lowages Baymore and Jordan Thorpe. And so I'm, I'm just wondering if there's going to be some rebalancing of that. I mean, there's the project in, that, I mean, the government's recognised, I think, that there's been a lack of this. There's a project in Baymore and Jordan Thorpe with £20 million worth of government's money over 10 years. And as I say, this, I think there's recognised the lack of work that's gone on there. Are we going to be looking at rebalancing how the, how the council works in terms of supporting local communities that haven't had that attention over the years? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Clement-Jones. So I think the community strategy is the intent for that. So the work we've done through the community strategy, which is obviously, I think consultation, I think closed maybe yesterday on it, that will be coming back to Strategy and Resources, clearly sets out some principles and those principles are to, you know, reflect communities within our work. And when we talk about communities, we talk about geography but we also talk about interest and identity as well. And it acknowledges that as a council, we maybe haven't been as engaged into communities as we need to be and haven't been designing services around need in the way we need to be in the past. So it is the mechanism to do that. In doing that, it does set principles about putting our resources based on need into place. So if we follow through in terms of that intent, my expectation is that that will lead to a change in the way in which the council operates and therefore we'll seek to address exactly the things you've, you've just set out councillor Clement-Jones. I think it's probably also worth saying, as you said, that the word, the, the trailblazer work, the national government funding, the £20 million over 10 years, which we expect to be coming, is, and that's, that's Baymore, Jordan Thorpe and we, you know, hopefully by when we will see in terms of the boundary, something to negotiate that. The intent of that work is for it to be very community based and to be about work being done based on what the community want to see done. And I think in order to make that work, we have to change our approach as a council because if we do what we've done in the past, potentially in that space and don't go in with the right intent, we risk not necessarily getting the benefit out of it, we want to. So in a slightly long-winded way, my view is hopefully the community strategy sets the intent to get where we, where we feel we need to be in that space, councillor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? No, perfect. So this, this report does include recommendations on page 18. Are we all agreed with those recommendations for the work programme? Excellent, silence is golden. We are all agreed. Item eight, this is the 2025/26 Quarter One Budget Monitoring. This can be found from page 27 of the Agenda and Jane Wobbe is presenting. Jane?
Thank you, Chair. I'm Jane Wobbe, Assistant Director of Finance and Accounting for the council and I'm here to present the 25/26 Quarter One Financial Position. The report that you have is a copy of the paper that was first presented to the Finance and Performance Committee on the 18th of August and is being shared across each policy committee this month to ensure transparency and enable accountable decision-making across all service areas. The format of the report has changed slightly this year with a more visual reporting approach presented in the appendix where you can find all the details on committee-specific budget areas. At quarter one, the council's forecasting a year-end general fund overspend of £28.2 million, driven primarily by persistent demand pressures in adults and children's social care, SEN transport and homelessness, alongside pressures in the dedicated schools grant and the housing revenue account. To partially offset this, £22.8 million of corporate mitigations have been released into the outturn position, including £7.1 million for housing benefit subsidy loss provision, £5.1 million for high cost placement growth and £9.8 million from the 24/25 Collection Fund surplus. The report covers some of the targeted recovery actions in place. These include a level, a service level programmes and corporate financial measures to reduce the overspend. Adult social care, there is efficiency reforms led by the chief exec through the Adult Social Care Improvement Board. In children's services, they're reviewing care placements, investing in in-house provision and improving home to school transport. And in housing, reducing temporary accommodation costs by minimising the use of bed and breakfast places and accelerating permanent housing transitions. The Communities, Parks and Leisure Committee budgets are forecast to underspend by £800,000 against a net revenue budget of £34.5 million. The majority of the underspends are driven by vacancies held in business improvement, community safety and the cost of living hub. The budget savings plans for the committee budgets relating to fee increases are forecast to deliver in full and service leads are actively engaged in budget management processes throughout and demonstrate proactive financial management. In response to the overall financial position, the council has introduced some organisation-wide spending controls, which include a six-month recruitment restriction, which is expected to save £6 million and a further £3 million from vacancy factor budgeting. We've also implemented discretionary spending restrictions, which are being centrally monitored with clear criteria for exemptions have also been established to ensure transparency and consistency and apply a level of pragmatism for our spending decisions across the organisation. We anticipate with these targeted and corporate measures in place, we can drive the overspend down to a position of under £20 million by the end of the year. Finance teams are actively monitoring and driving these targets with services. These measures are coordinated across governance forums, including the Future Sheffield Board, Performance and Delivery Board and the Budget Improvement Group, ensuring that strategic alignment and accountability. As we face these financial challenges, the Future Sheffield As we face these financial challenges, the Future Sheffield Transformation Programme has become ever more vital in reshaping council services towards a more sustainable and efficient operating model. It's important to recognise that these pressures are not unique to Sheffield and we're actively engaging with national government consultations on funding reform and welcome the government's commitment to a three year local government finance settlement from 26-27. This longer term funding horizon will help us plan our budget strategy with greater confidence, particularly in contrast with the current approach, where annual funding allocations are only confirmed in December, just before the financial year begins. We expect to receive further detail from government in November, which will be critical in shaping our forward planning. So whilst the position is challenging, the council is responding with urgency and focus. Sharing this update with each policy committee ensures transparency, strengthens governance and enables that accountable decision making across all service areas. The next quarter's update will be presented to the Finance and Performance Committee in November and all policy committees in December. So happy to take any questions.
Thank you for the report. Do we have any questions on this item? Brian?
Right, thank you. I'm sorry for the direct question, but the question to my mind is which posts are going to remain unfilled during the job suspension? And the impact that will have?
I can answer in relation to the rules that have been put in place, but I think if Lisa or Tom wanted to come in on any particular items. So I think there's, as I said in the presentation, there's a level of pragmatism that we're applying to that, so the exemption criteria does kind of set out where there is statutory or if we have, you know, if there are reasons that we need to have those posts in place, it's going to affect service delivery, then of course we need to, you know, have a sensible view on that. The services are presenting some vacancies across the board, so there's a few in different areas as discussed, so I don't know, Lisa, do you want to come in on any of those specifics?
Thanks councillor Holmes Shaw. So if I give you a practical example, so as Jane set out, there are, there are exception criteria. So for instance, where it's a statutory service that we wouldn't be able to continue to deliver to the required standard, where there's health and safety that would be impacted, where we simply wouldn't be able to deliver a service that the council would be expected to deliver, so there are, or where there's a post that's income generating, for instance. So there are exception criteria and as Jane said, we are taking a very pragmatic approach to the vacancy consideration. So we've had some vacancies in our libraries that we've looked at and as a result of that, we've reconfigured some roles within the service so that we can fill some of them, but not all of them immediately, because this is only temporary restrictions as well, this is not permanent restrictions. Where we do have other vacancies, we're looking at whether we can extend temporary staff, move staff around services as well to support other service areas, utilise. So for instance, Tom and myself might discuss where I've got a vacancy, Tom might be able to help and so on, so we're putting very practical measures in place. We aren't setting out to continue to hold any vacancies that will impact on any of those things that I said earlier, so it's a temporary restrictions and we are looking at each case on its merit. Is that helpful?
Yeah, it's helpful. It doesn't give a full picture, but yes, much more interesting and I'm sure we will have further discussions about that.
Thank you. I suspect with the freeze on recruitment, it's, in terms of the policy, it's probably more a discussion for finance, isn't it? And I think it's fair to say that all services are dealing with it as best that they can. Yeah, it's a tough situation. Any further comments or questions? Lisa?
Being a bit pedantic, but it's, we're really careful now to call it recruitment restrictions rather than freeze, because we don't have a recruitment freeze, so there will still continue to be recruitment. Sorry Chair, I'm being pedantic, but it's just, it's trying to get that message across that the council is not in a position where we are not recruiting to any posts, where they meet the criteria that Jenny and I have outlined, then we will continue to recruit. So it's just ensuring that people understand that, that we aren't putting anything, anyone at risk because of the recruitment restrictions.
Fair, yeah, thank you. So the report does contain recommendations for approval on page 28. Are we all agreed with those recommendations? Yeah, looks like we are all agreed. Thank you. Item nine, this is the Year Ahead Report from page 49 of the agenda and Lisa is leading on this. Over to you Lisa.
Thank you Chair. So this is a forward look for the CPL Committee for 25-26, we're already into that municipal year, so we will have started some of the work that I'm going to outline. So the report sets out the forward agenda for the Communities' Parks and Leisure Policy Committee for 25-26 and it builds on the significant progress that we made in 2024-25. It highlights the key actions and priorities required to deliver the council plan and the city goals with a continued focus on community engagement, service quality and financial sustainability. So I'm not going to go through the report verbatim, so pull out some key points. So as Chair and Tom have already discussed, the committee does cover a broad, diverse, complex range of services, including parks, leisure and libraries, communities and youth services, and each area has developed its own forward plan. So this report specifically outlines the priorities for the areas that I oversee, which are parks, leisure, libraries and bereavement services. So the agenda is shaped by the council plan outcomes, which include supporting children and young people in creating great neighbourhoods, fostering caring and engaged communities and promoting a creative and prosperous city, as well as ensuring that we contribute to Sheffield being a growing, connected and sustainable city. So the achievements for the last municipal year for 24-25 include major investments in green spaces and leisure facilities, successful transitions to new operators for those leisure facilities and for the entertainment venues, including the Arena and City Hall, and inclusive programming across libraries, parks, leisure, advancements in biodiversity and digital access. In section two, in the proposal section, the committee is asked to endorse a forward look programme for 25-26 that builds on last year's achievements. And the proposals includes continuing to work with communities to improve neighbourhoods and green spaces, progressing plans for the redevelopment of leisure centres, including Springs and Concorde leisure centres that we're already out in consultation for, and also plans for the Graves Building that currently houses Central Library and the Graves Gallery. We're looking to deliver further improvements in parks, playgrounds and sports facilities across the city and strengthening community engagement and inclusive programming across all our services. Across all of the plans that we have for the coming year and beyond that, we will look to embed climate and biodiversity commitments in all of our work. And this approach is underpinned by a commitment to continue partnership working, looking after financial stewardship and aligning resources with the council plan. And so as a committee, I am recommending you to formally acknowledge the progress made during 24-25, recognising the contribution of elected members, officers and community partners. Review and endorse the key issues outlined in section three as priority areas for the committee's work programme, and there are lots of them. So I'm definitely not going to read them all out. In 25-26, ensuring alignment with the council plan and city goals. And also a commitment to cross committee collaboration, because a lot of these, these work programmes are cross committee, cross cutting themes, to actively progress the opportunities and address the challenges identified and embed them within the wider council plan, ensuring coordinated action across the relevant policy areas. There are no direct financial, legal or climate implications arising from this report at this stage, so these will be considered as the individual projects are brought forward for approval and equality, diversity and inclusion remain central to all service plans with ongoing efforts to address inequalities and ensure accessible, high quality services for all Sheffield residents.
Thank you for that. I also want to note the fact that as a committee, we have had a workshop on this as well, so we can all discuss our priorities for the committee for the years going forward. And it's, I think one of the benefits of the committee system as well, that we can all bring our own experiences and knowledge and expertise to what we do. And it was, some of the conversations we had were fascinating, so it's good to see that represented in this report as well. Do we have any questions or comments on this item? No, perfect. That was easy. I think it, yeah, I think we do need to celebrate all the work that has been done, because as a committee, a lot of what we do isn't a statutory requirement. And as we just heard in the previous item, there are fairly significant financial challenges for this service, for the council and for other councils across the country as well. But despite that, we've still had things like the refurb, the rebuilding of Concorde and Springs leisure centre being pushed ahead, refurbishment of other leisure centres, the 14 council managed green flag sites, species survival fund in Shirebrook Valley, the cremation and cemeteries strategy that we'll be hearing later today as well. So despite all the challenges, a lot has been done and it's clear that we've got a lot more planned as well. So with that in mind, I will move to the recommendations on page 51. Are we all happy with those recommendations? Excellent, we are all agreed. Thank you very much, thank you for the report. So that moves us on to item 10, which is commercial dog walkers in parks and dog walking code of conduct. This is from page 67 of the agenda pack, I believe we'll be hearing from Ruth and Jo on this item. Thank you. If you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and then introducing the report.
I'll introduce myself first, I'm Ruth Bell, I'm Head of Parks and Countryside, but I am going to hand over to Jo because she is the person that's done all of the work on this.
Hello, I'm Jo Pearce, I've done all of the work on this. I'm the, one of the service managers from the Parks and Countryside Service, leading on business and partnership, so thank you everybody and also to Tessa and Helena as well, so thank you for your questions. Yeah, I'll respond to them within this, but had a good meeting with the Friends of Port Valley with Anne Vassage, so that had definitely been fed through. Also have a seven year old son who plays football, so also very familiar with the challenges around dog poo on football pitches. So yeah, thank you very much everybody. I think we've kind of gone into some of this with your earlier introduction, so thank you councillor Crossthorn. We're really pleased to be bringing something here today around this. We, we know it's not going to solve the world, but it's a really good start and some, yeah, step in the right direction. So you've seen that, just very quickly, the approach, I'm assuming you've all read the report, it wasn't ridiculously long, so you should have had time to read that one. It's a refreshed approach, there has been lots of work done in lots of different ways over the years, so I'm not suggesting this is the solution to everything, but it's a refreshed approach to managing the increase in number of dogs in its parts, in our parks, woodlands and countryside areas. We want to balance the benefits of dog ownership, you know, we know it's gone through the roof since the pandemic, me included, and there's so many brilliant benefits to that, but equally there's challenges from a recreational perspective, as football team have flagged from an ecology perspective, ecological impact. So we recognise there's a challenge and we want to do something that balances that so that people can enjoy our spaces, the people who want to have dogs and the people that don't want to have dogs. We want to do something that's really, yeah, supportive to that challenge. As well as the local businesses, many of whom are trying to do a really good thing and unfortunately getting a bit flak because of a minority who are not. So yes, with over 62,000 dogs, not, someone's out with a counter that are doing that, but there's a lot of dogs in our outdoor spaces, so we are wanting to do something that, that balances this challenge. So there's two key measures that we're proposing at this point. As councillor Crossthorn has said, we've got a code of conduct. There's a lot of emphasis on the commercial dog walkers, but actually there's a public challenge here that is not really just by commercial dog walkers. So there's a public code of conduct and absolutely, as Helena said, this is about educating. People often want to do the right thing if they know that it's really bad, if your dog's had a tick treatment, don't let them go in the water. There's some, there's already really great examples locally, nationally. Friends of Port Valley have got some really lovely signs already that talk about keeping the paws on the pass, an area that might be ecologically important, just keep it out there. But as you've said, that's a really good space to be going in. So we're talking about a code of conduct that we would put together, working together with our communications team to design a public comms campaign, a communications campaign with tailored messaging, so if we're talking about waterways or we're talking about a recreational space like a football pitch, or we're talking about an ecologically important site with sensitivities, we would like to design something that goes out there to try and support people to do the right thing. So that's the, that's the one element. The second element, as councillor Crossthorn highlighted earlier, is the voluntary registration scheme for commercial dog walkers. And again, yeah, in an ideal world, maybe a PSPO might be something that we were heading towards, but as we've also just heard from a budgetary perspective, we've not got loads of cash at the minute, so let's just be honest about the fact that let's do what we can do, keep monitoring, keep getting the data and, and do what we can. So the voluntary registration scheme would be introduced. People that sign, operators that sign up to that would have their, their business names displayed on the website, people can see that these are the operators who are working with us responsibly to do what we can in Sheffield. That, those are the kind of the main key points, anything glaringly obvious from the intro?
No, the only thing that we did want to say is, we do know that the vast majority of people are doing, are doing the right thing. We know that we've got lots of responsible dog owners in Sheffield, we've got lots of responsible commercial dog walking operators, and this is about supporting them and then trying to bring, bring others into that space. So this is not a suggestion that people, lots of people are not doing what they, what they need to do. We want to support those that are doing the right things in Sheffield and have everybody doing it to support everybody to use our parks, everyone to walk their dogs in our parks and also those spaces to stay what they need to be, safe spaces that are ecologically rich and that can be used in the way that they're meant to be used by anybody wanting to use them.
Thank you. So yeah, just a final point as well, obviously we've heard from a Friends group here, we have councillor Brian Holmes Shaw, as well as land managers, Sheffield Green Spaces Forum, sorry if that was a random shout out. Sheffield Green Spaces Forum have been flagging this for a long time, so for people that are not familiar, that is the forum that brings together Friends group and environmental groups across the city who've been flagging this as a key challenge for a long time. So this is in response to lots of feedback, absolutely, this isn't just us sat here going, let's come up with something, this is absolutely partner, volunteer, people in the field, or not field, or in the woods or parks, kind of inputting saying, come on, what can we be doing? So we will continue to listen to that, that it's not been designed yet in terms of the comms campaign, so Helena, your material and ideas have already been fed into that and that would be put together with all of that feedback. So yeah, thank you to everybody that's inputted, as well as kind of other land management partners who've been referenced. So I shall pause, if that's okay, and open to questions or comments.
Excellent, thank you. Taking note of these before I forget. Yeah, oh my God, okay. I might just go around the entire committee again. Yeah. I think before we start with questions, I do just want to say as well that I think from my perspective on the environmental side of things, this is a fair way of doing it, because the majority of people, 99% of people want to do what's right for the environment and are conscious about the environment. But unless they know the impact that's, that's happening, they don't know what, what to do or how to look after their local green spaces with their dogs. So the awareness of this is so important and is the crucial part of this. So I look forward to lots of fun advertising campaigns going forward. So I'll open with questions, I'll start with Tony.
Thank you, thank you Chair, and thank you for your report, very good, very interesting and very extensive. I welcome the report because I feel that there are a lot of people that do walk their dogs and they're not responsible, they're irresponsible people, but there are also lots and lots of people, like myself, dog lovers who do the best and do, do all they can to try and, to, to help with the environment and, and everything else that goes with it. I just wondered if there were one or two caveats that could put me... I just wondered if there, there are one or two caveats that could, could be put in perhaps with, I seen somewhere where, I seen somewhere where they're asking for extended dog leads. Probably that is an issue whereas where if, if, if you're out on the street with your dog and you've got an extended lead, that, that doesn't keep the dog sort of restricted very well. And so that would be one thing that I would add to it to, to try and amongst other things that you're trying to do. But I do welcome the report and I think it's fantastic initiative that we're doing here and, and thank you to the ladies behind that have been presented their petitions or requests and hopefully that we can accommodate all that in, into the, into the report. Thank you. Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Tony. If we take three questions at a time to keep it going. Mary, did you have your hand up? What was it? Okay, so we'll go to Nabilah.
Thank you Chair. And again, thank you for the report, Jo, really welcome it. I know it made reference to other councils who've maybe run something similar. Because it's a voluntary scheme, do we know what the uptake has been like with those councils? And then how many maybe like dog walking companies or dog walkers have sort of signed up? Thank you.
Thank you. And finally for this round, Mike.
Thank you Curtis and thank you, Jo, for, for the work that you've done on, on this report. I have to say that in Parson Cross and Firth Park, I don't see many dog walkers taking multiple dogs out unless they're their own two or three, three dogs that are their own. Nothing, do you think we have to be? Do have to be clear that this, this may go some way to addressing some problems, but it won't address others like irresponsible dog owners who are happy to let their dogs crap in the park next to swing slides, other apparatus, equipment that kids like to use. And I suppose I'm going to ask, I would, I would hope that this scheme will encourage, be the kind of scheme that encourages people to, that who are dog walkers, want to be accredited. But what if you then come across? Is there anything built into the scheme where if you find that some people have got themselves accredited, but play no attention to the, to the framework and the, the advice and rules they're meant to be following of getting them barred from accreditation and possibly even advertising that so that people know that if they went to that person, then they're not actually a reputable dog walker? Thank you.
Over to you.
Okay, so there were three questions. First one, Tony, can I just double check your question? Was it, can we add something about extended leads into the, into the code of conduct?
Yeah, thank you. Really good questions and it's that, all of that has been coming through the various different conversations we've been having with some really great commercial dog walkers, different people. As you say, the challenges at Firth Park and Parson Cross Park that I've done sports fans on many years ago and I remember being on there, the challenges there are very different to the challenges in an ecologically rich woodland or in a, you know, a waterway setting or, so it's trying to, we're not saying one side if it's all here. It's absolutely coming up with something with messaging so that if you are next to a football pitch, you've got some materials you can be using there. If you are, there is the, you know, the approach to the voluntary registration scheme. I'm doing them in the wrong order, but if I answer that one, then we'll go that way. The, the point about, within the terms and conditions, which was in appendix two of the registration scheme, it does talk about that. If you are in breach of that, we have got the ability, I can't remember the legal word, the ability to take that license, not licence, take that, yes, from you. So yeah, that is listed within the, the Ts and Cs there. Again, this is a voluntary registration scheme and I think your point around, we want to celebrate the good here. We want this to be a really positive thing that highlights those operators that are doing, working really hard with us because Sheffield's a really important green city and we've declared a nature emergency and we want to be doing the right thing. So we want to celebrate that, which is why we've been working really well with some, some great operators. But where we are then highlighted that there are people in breach of that who have said they'll sign up to something, we want to have the mechanism to be able to deal with that. We have other way, you know, at the minute we have a scheme so if someone's running a zumba class in a park and actually they've not signed up to an agreement with us, we can, we will approach people, we've not got loads of capacity to do this, but we do do that at the minute and say, did you know you really should be booking that in with us please if you're doing that, if you're playing football here, if you're doing that there, we have got that process. So we would do it in the same way. Is that all right? Yes. Yeah, so in terms of all the councils, yes, so some people are doing a PSPO, sorry, so Public Space Protection Order, which is a far more kind of resource intensive. So different levels of support and engagement from a voluntary registration scheme. We've got some examples of that and it's been mixed. But yeah, we can get a little bit more detail on that if you'd like, but I think we will just kind of keep monitoring it as we go through. All right, thank you. And yes, that had also been flagged around extended leads and they're a real faff and they're real trip hazard and they're quite dangerous at times. So we need to be careful and I'm not a comms expert, but in designing a comms campaign that doesn't have so many messages, people go, I'm allowed to walk my cat bike, walk my bike, walk my dog there, I'm allowed to do this. You know, it needs to be something that's manageable, but that's definitely something that's been flagged as a message that we would want to incorporate. Thank you and thanks for the support as well.
Thank you. So we'll go around for another set of three, so Simon.
Thanks very much Chair. I'll say in terms of extended leads, they're massively dangerous. I mean, I've had Labradors for twenty years and they can get up a lot of momentum in twenty feet, which will just rip your arm out. But yeah, in terms of the, the March, I'm keeping on a short lead from, from March to August, I'm just wondering how people are going to know what, what areas that's in. I don't think I've ever seen one and walked my dog all over the city. So how, how do we know what, what is, you know, which areas we should keep on a lead from March to August that are ecologically sensitive?
Yeah, perfect, thank you. Peter?
Thank you Chair. Yeah, with the report, there's, there's mention of the environmental detriment caused by dog waste and I appreciate that. In the report, it talks about the, there may be environmental problems from dog waste and obviously that's sort of, I think, alluding to the fact that responsible dog owners would take their waste home with them. But dog waste doesn't all get bagged up, obviously there's dog urine as well. Now, we're all aware of eutrophication of our waterways. That's when excess fertilisers essentially, excess nutrients get into a water course and cause algal blooms. Now in a nature reserve, you're also going to get that through the phosphorus and nitrogen from dog waste. And although the vast, almost ninety, almost a hundred percent of the phosphorus produced by dogs is in the dog poo, nitrogen from dog waste comes equally from poo and urine. So I think it's important in the report to mention that environmental harms from dogs is unavoidable. Even responsible dog owners can't help but damaging the environment through dog urine. So I'd welcome if that could be mentioned in the report. My other, are we going to have comments later Chair?
You can say now, yeah.
Thank you. So that's a question. But then I would also point out that the RSPCA has a recommending, recommendation for responsible dog walking companies. So that's commercial dog walkers. They recommend a maximum of four dogs. So I just want to point that out. I know we're going for six and I understand the reasons for that being that we want people to sign up and we'd rather get more people signing up than less. So I do understand that, but I'm just putting that on record. And then an anecdote. So in Ecclesall, in Encliff Park, we've had residents complaining about the poor standards of our toilets in our parks. Now, obviously we know that our council is doing its very best and we have a hard, dedicated workforce who maintain those toilets twice a day, doing their best, but they're very well-used toilets in Encliff Park at the cafe there. Through the Ward Pot, we spent some of our money replacing the old and substandard baby changing facilities in Encliff Park Cafe and I'm really happy about that. It was well-received by residents. And I was in the park shortly after they had been replaced and I was talking to one of the members of the park staff who clean the toilets. I was saying, thank you so much for the work you do, it's really appreciated, I know it's hard work. And he said to me, one of the worst things that he sees regularly or that he saw regularly before we changed the baby changing tables was, I don't know if you'll believe this, but he said he would regularly find dog paw prints on the baby changing tables. Now, I found that pretty shocking and I think that just raises sometimes the sort of, there is a, a level of entitlement that some dog owners have for their pooch. And I'm hoping that this report and these policies will go some way to education in this city and hopefully we will be able to all use the parks happily together. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we'll soon be breaking the record for the number of times a word poo has been mentioned in a council meeting. Yeah, more to come, Alan says. And finally for this round, we'll go to Brian.
Thank you Chair. Some, some quick questions. Bear with me. The first one actually follows on from what Peter was saying, I didn't realise you were going to say that, but so will education be included or can it provided or can someone be encouraged from the dog community to provide education about what we're trying to put in place here, which is a better way for people to interact with other people in our parks? So that's what we're asking for. So I wondered whether that could happen. The second question is, yes, it's interesting that we've chosen six and again, I think like Peter, I understand why we want to draw people into this, but will there be an opportunity to review that? And is there going to be a, a kind of set date that we have where if it's not working properly, for good or for bad, will this policy be dealt with? Because it's taken us a long, long, long time to get to this point where we are talking about dogs. Okay? And the third one is actually something slightly different, which is, yeah, I'm, I'm a dog owner and, you know, very happy with my dog. However, some people aren't. And one of the aspects of that is people's allergies. So if you've got a severe allergy to, it could be cat hair, it could be dog hair. I've started to get in my inbox questions about, well, can we have a list or a grouping of some kind that's available of dog-free sites and cafes? Now, this isn't entirely what Parks is set up to do, but you are, you, you, we are one of those elements. We could be working with public health, for example, to, to try and encourage this to happen. Because I've started to get that in my inbox. Thank you.
Over to you. Yep.
Sorry, that was echoey. Have I just been shouting previously? So to go, the first one was around ground nesting birds, but also the ecological, you know, really well articulated point there. Our ecology team have inputted loads into this. Clearly there's lots of knowledge within Sheffield, within the friends groups people, but also within our own service, we have ecological inputs. So absolutely right. This isn't just about dog poo, sorry, ticket and others as time said. This is also about that wider ecological impact. There'll be certain sites, as you say, where ground nesting birds, that is really more important. There are already spaces where there are those signs up. So for example, where we're working with Sheffield Wildlife Trust in certain spaces, there are already signs around ground nesting birds, keep your dogs on leads. So we're suggesting that within the code of conduct is a lot more visible. So that is, that is published where those spaces are with kind of banners or whatever that, that marketing material would be. So yes, better signage, better education. The point around education, yeah, in an ideal world, we would have people going out and educating, but we haven't got an officer here, we haven't got staff, but we have a will and people who know a lot of, know a lot about this within our volunteers, our staff who are already in, in spaces with the people that we're working with. So we haven't got the resource to have someone going out and doing that education piece, but absolutely let's work with, you know, the commercial dog walking partners who are really well-educated in this and can help us with this as well. There was the suggestion in the report around, and we've already started this partnership group in developing this with a group of commercial dog walkers to continually kind of review the impact of this. On that side, clearly there's a bigger piece here that's not just about the voluntary registration scheme, it's about the public comms campaign. So we're proposing to regularly review that. We've not put a specific, a suggested date in there. I'd suggest an, an annual review to look at the data, but that's not written in there at the minute, but we could, if people thought that was a good idea, we could add that in. The point around some dog exclusion zones, absolutely not everywhere, a triple SI site is not going to be appropriate for a commercial dog walker to be on or anyone walking a dog on there. So there would be certain sites where that wouldn't be a site of special scientific interest, that would not be appropriate. So there are some spaces where, yeah, it's just not appropriate for someone to walk a dog. So we would have that, we would make that clear. Yeah. There are also really good examples, again, celebrating the positives where people are doing it really well, having dog-free zones and then saying, well, here is a nice dog playground or a dog space that you can go and take your dog to. So as we said right at the start, this is the start of some, well, it's not start because we've already been doing things, but this is the next step into different things. But we would love to see within a site potentially kind of more dedicated spaces where it is really great to take your dog and then some spaces where we say, no, please don't be, take them in those spaces. So that would be, any other examples that we could be bringing into this, we would like to as we go through this process. Educate, anything else?
Matt Numbers. One of the things that I would say about the education point is whilst we might not have somebody going out speaking to people on the ground, one of the key things that we want to come out from this piece of work is that comms campaign. And we, we know from, from other things that we do that, for example, social media, short messages have a, have a really big impact on people in, in the public. It is a good way of saying, we're doing this and this is why we're doing it. So we found it a lot where we relax mowing, where we, we don't, don't mow as much on sites, where we've put those messages out. We've had people responding and saying they didn't know that and they appreciate getting the information. So I think that there are different ways that we can educate people and, and that can be people that currently have dogs and people, people that don't. So we can say what we're doing, why we're doing it and what, what we hope the impact of it will be. So I think that there will be an education, there will be an element of education, even if it doesn't look quite as specific as somebody going out speaking to people within a particular space.
Yeah, just the final one that we've probably not come back on was the maximum numbers. That was something that came through a lot in the conversations we've had with people in a whole different host of settings. And as you both alluded to, the reason why we have proposed six, there's, there's lots of different reasons. One of the key reasons will be around the fact that actually six dogs walked well by a reputable company, business partner, who know their dogs, are well-trained, they know exactly how to manage that situation. That can be done well and that is a viable business. There are examples where people are walking too many dogs and that is, that's not what we would want to encourage. Less than six would make that very, very challenging for the viability of the businesses. And as a result, that potentially is a risk that they wouldn't sign up as you, as people have referenced. We want to do something that's supportive, that celebrates the good that people are doing. But as you've said, yeah, we would continually keep things under review and we recognise that there are challenges in that. Lots of other places that are introducing these schemes are going around the number of six. We're not aware of many that are, are doing four dogs, but as I said, for the conversation we've had with partners, that would be a real challenge. So there'd be a real risk in actual sign up to it. Yeah, so yeah, definitely a review in twelve months seems like a good thing. So we could come back and give you an update on how things are working with a bit more ecological data as well would be great to know how the, what the impact's been.
Perfect, thank you. So I saw, was it Mary and Alan want to come in as well? Mary?
Yeah, I just want to welcome, say that, you know, I welcome this report and, and what you're going to do with it. And I think obviously we've got some great parks, wonderful parks, and these business people, because that's what they are, are making great use of our parks and, and that's a great benefit to them and the dogs and the owners of the dogs. So a small registration fee, which I think is quite small.
So a small registration fee, which I think is quite small, would go some way to help maintain our parks, I hope. And maybe they can do some education as they go along with other people that use our parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan?
Yeah, thanks Chair, yeah. Yeah, there are, I believe, more responsible dog owners than irresponsible. It only takes one irresponsible dog owner. Dog owners normally go and say, well, maybe once, twice, three times a day. And if they poo every day for a year, that's a lot of dog poo. In the summer, because of the nature, it often disintegrates and dries up and disappears. In the winter, it's there for weeks, if not months. I live next to a park and there's some regular dog owners I see who don't pick it up. You're offering a dog bag to pick it up and that's as far as I go because otherwise you're on dangerous ground. So yeah, there's more. Same with the commercial dog owners. In reply to councillor Chaplin, the dog owners that I see on the commercial ones are in Wychrham, Wandcliffe Woods, and Utterbridge, and they walk the River Don Walk there. Need somewhere for the dog van to park and so where they can walk and walk straight on to the pass. They walk from Utterbridge down to Clearwells Lane and back on a regular basis. I do that on a Friday, that walk with my dog. But most of them are reasonable people and say hello and they've got the dogs under control. But it's really difficult. The report's good, it's a start, I believe. And we built this up through the committee as well, through presentations and discussions. So it's a start. As other councillors said, I would like this to come back, as you're saying, in 12 months. But in between that, sort of late spring, could we have just a brief update of how you think it's going? And then we can probably look forward to in a year's time, do we need to make changes? But thanks for the report and thanks for very much. I think we'll all find it better, I'm hoping so anyway. As regards sort of where dogs cannot walk, I think Redmires is a site where there are special signs up there. If you go to Redmires, where no dogs allowed in that particular park. And I sometimes go up onto Langseth, Langseth Moors. And you can't allow dogs to walk up there in the nesting time, so from March to end of October. And I go up there, when I go up there, I normally go up Christmas time, so that there's no problem with nesting birds. I've got a swing of spaniels, so yeah, it's into nesting birds. But keep them, it's just knowing your dog and knowing where you can go, where you can't go. And it's the same at the seaside, we've been seaside, Scarborough, Whitby, you can take the dogs on the beach, but only in certain parts. And over this year, I've certainly looked and everybody was obeying the rules of where you can go and can't go. So it's only replicating that where we are here. But thanks very much. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for that. Do you want to come back on any of those points or any final comments from the panel?
Yeah, as, oh sorry, yes. Yeah, as councillor Hooper said, there's been lots of conversations with the Community Parks and Leisure Committee that have moulded and helped support this. And it really has been a partnership approach with people from lots of different settings here. So I hope people feel that we've got something that is representative of that whole spectrum of people here and partners in the city. Because that's what we're trying to do. So massively thank you for the support and yeah, let's see what we can do, review it in 12 months and keep going with it as we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think that there's two aspects to my mind with this. There's the environmental impact of this, which is incredibly important, just as we wouldn't turn up to a National Trust home and let our dogs on the furniture. We also need to be careful with our environment, don't we? And make sure that our dogs are doing the right thing there. And then there's the code of conduct, which as a dog owner myself, a lot of it is just common sense. We've got a rescued dog, we got him just after the pandemic. And when we first got him, he couldn't see another dog from across the field without reacting. Because he'd been through some stuff as a rescued dog. And we've got him to a point now where we can just about walk past the dog if the dog is on a lead and they're well behaved and he's doing really well. But as soon as one person with an off-leash dog, only not in sight, the dog comes running up to him, it sets his training back weeks, if not months. And it's not, it's stressful for him and the other dog and for us as well. So I think a lot of this is about doing the right thing for the dogs as well. So with that in mind, we have recommendations in front of us on page 68. Are we all agreed with those recommendations? That was agreed unanimously. Thank you committee and thank you to the officers on that report. And that brings us on to item 11 of today's agenda, which is the cremation and cemetery services strategy. From page 81 of the Agenda Pack and Ellie Fraser will be presenting to the committee.
Hello, I'm Ellie Fraser, I'm head of bereavement and coroners service. And I'm here today to present the draft content of our new cremation and cemetery services strategy, which isn't that easy to say. It was well over a year ago that I first came to this committee and asked you to endorse the development of the strategy and the search for new burial land. And it's nice to be here today to present what we think are the contents or final contents of that strategy. So as a local authority, we act as a burial and cremation authority, which means we have the power to run cemeteries and crematoria. And in Sheffield, we've been doing so for quite a long time. And we will be doing so for quite a long time into the future because, sorry to put it down on the conversation, but we are all going to die at some point. Now, we all want our wishes to be honoured when we pass away and we want it to be treated with dignity. But I think it's also really, really important to remember that bereavement services are just as much about the bereaved and those who are left behind as the people who have themselves died. Now, as a service, we focus on the here and now. We're very proud to deliver a compassionate and professional service to anyone who needs it in Sheffield. Our teams care and we're proud of what we do. Things in this area don't change that quickly, but over time they do change. Our focus has been very much on the day to day and we haven't necessarily kept pace with that change. So the population of the city has changed, customers' needs and expectations in this field has changed. How society talks about and deals with death has changed. Our cemetery spaces are running out, technology is changing. Our environmental awareness is improving and the financial position that we're working in has also changed. And we're facing more constraints than we have done before. So we need a strategy to guide our service development, enable us to grow and modernise and allow us to keep providing high quality services for the future. So since I first came to this committee, we've carried out a citywide consultation with good responses. We've worked a cross-party members task and finish group and we've done quite a lot of research and talked to lots of other people who work in this sector. And through all of that work, we have developed the strategy that I'm here to present today. So the strategy itself links to the council plan principles of people, prosperity and planet, which nicely really align quite closely with our priorities as a service. What we've done is we've broken down the areas that we talk about in the strategy into six strategic themes, my teeth in, of compassionate, inclusive services, sustainable provision, environmentally responsible bereavement services, modernisation and innovation, collaboration and engagement and financial resilience. And under each of those themes, we've looked at what we will do, what we think good looks like and how we're going to make it happen. So I won't try and cover 30 pages of strategy in five minutes. But I think it's really important to pull out that the strategy is very people focused. It's about delivering the right services, inclusive services with a community focus. There's a huge focus on the environment and sustainability. Sustainability means environmentally sustainable, sustainable services and spaces, but also financially sustainable as well. People that we spoke to were all quite supportive, or generally quite supportive of us creating income through delivering better services and using that income to improve our service offer. So we need to find a financially stable position that allows us to deliver this strategy in partnership with others. It's also worth just pulling out that it is a long-term strategy. When we're talking about ways of working, when we're looking at the management of new sites, we're looking at the legislation and investment needed, we've got to think long term. But it's also important that it stays current. So alongside the strategy itself, we are intending to have an implementation and delivery plan, which will outline the practical steps that we're going to take to try and deliver what we've set out in the strategy. There will be timelines within that. That will be managed through sort of internal governance or committee decisions as appropriate. Alongside that, we're proposing to refresh the strategy every five years to make sure it stays aligned with current council priorities. So I'm here today to request your approval of the content. And assume we achieve that, the plan is to go away and improve the presentation to make it more accessible, but also more easily, easy for people to digest. There's no pictures or colour or anything in there at the moment, it's purely words. And then also to put the detail in terms of the implementation plan with some time scales against the items that we would deliver first. I haven't. So Lisa just prompted me to mention that alongside the strategy, we were at Strategy and Resources Committee last week with a presentation of our citywide cemetery plan. So that set out the vision for what cemetery provision looks like in Sheffield for the future. And that was approved and that's continuing to move forward. That would be an item in the implementation and delivery plan. So it's very, kind of very closely linked to the strategy. What was agreed by Strategy and Resources Committee is very much aligned with the principles of the strategy. But it would be one of the items that is in our delivery plan.
Great, thank you for that. I know that there has been an awful lot of work that has gone into this over the years. And before we open it up to questions and comments, I wanted again to place on record thanks to everybody who was on the task and finish group who fed into this work. It's been said before, but I'll say it again, that it's probably one of the best task and finish groups that I've been part of as a councillor. We came out with actual recommendations, which is rare, but we did. And they are in this document, I can see those as I read it. So it's been really good to see this turned into an actionable report that we will be voting on soon. So have we got any comments or questions on this report? Simon?
Thank you very much for the report. Just a question personally, I'm down to be cremated when, well, assuming my body's found. But, and you know, I was just interested about acclamation, which I believe is now legal in the UK. Do you think that'll get wider adoption? I mean, I think it is greener than actually cremation. And if Sheffield might be looking at that as an option. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll take Mary as well.
A question of reuse of plots, I'm not sure what that means, but if you could answer that, all sorts of things coming into my mind there. And eco-friendly burials, I know you maybe can't mention the sites, maybe you can, but can you tell me what kind of things you had in mind? And the income generation, that's really important, given that we, the circumstances we're all in.
Thank you, over to you.
Okay, thank you. So acclamation, I think it's probably worth saying that it's all about innovation, which sounds sort of an odd topic when you're talking about death. The Law Commission are currently consulting on new fumery methods and how they get adopted and approved in the UK. So we are feeding into that consultation and obviously staying aligned to what comes out of that. Because that will shape how new methods can come about and be utilised in the future. Acclamation is an interesting option. It's something I won't commit either way as to whether we will offer it in Sheffield. I know there are benefits and challenges to it, but there are also other new emerging technologies as well in this space. And it's about trying to find environmentally friendly practices that are affordable and quick enough. And to say it in that sense, but the cremation takes, you know, a couple of hours, it can vary. Some of the new practices that are coming forward take several months. So it's about trying to find, not acclamation, that is quicker, but looking at the new technologies and making the decisions that are right for Sheffield in time with when our services change. So our existing cremators have a lifespan. When nearing the end of that lifespan, we will consider what we do in terms of replacement. We will look at all the options available to us. So I think that's hopefully covered in the strategy more around innovation, staying up to date with that. Reuse of plots is discussed again. There was a recent Law Commission consultation on this. And this is about trying to recognise that the cemetery itself has a life cycle to it. So it is a sensitive conversation about reusing burial plots that have been used before. So that is specific graves and where it might be appropriate to do that and how we go about it. So there's no commitment in this plan to do it or otherwise, but there is a commitment to stay abreast of those changes. And when, if and when the timing is right, to consider it as an option. There are a number of places across the country that are starting to do it. The way the law around it sits is that London are able to do it, but other areas have to go through an Act of Parliament to be able to. So a couple of areas have taken that through. But the law in that field is looking like it will change. So again, we just need to stay up to date with that. Lisa's asking about time scales for reusing plots. No, there are laws around it at the moment and I don't want to quote the wrong figures. It's something along the lines of 75 years since the last burial, but there is also other rules with regards to the expiry of the lease, the grave leases. So I just want to reassure everybody, there is no intention at any point, kind of immediately, to do anything around that. But we're just keeping an eye on it. And if we decide to go down that route, be carefully considered and brought back for a decision. In terms of eco-friendly burials, that's, as I say, the environment, both in terms of the way we deliver our services and making sure that we are environmentally aware in our service provision. Thinking about environmental design of the cemetery spaces themselves, but then also about providing environmentally friendly burial options. They're all things that we need to be aware of. There was a clear response from the public that we wanted to improve environmentally friendly burial offer in the city. And we're seeing nationally that one in 10 burials now are green burials for want of a kind of commonly used term. So we are exploring what we could deliver. The plan that Strategy and Resources Committee approved, the vision for cemetery spaces, did include a dedicated natural burial site. The specifics of that haven't been worked through, but it would be around making sure any burials that take place there are within a environmentally friendly framework. So there would be standards. But we also want to make sure that we have other environmentally friendly offers within all of our new cemeteries and all of our cemeteries moving forward. And in terms of the income generation, so it's about making sure that the income we generate through the delivery of day-to-day service provision, that enough of that is reinvested back to make sure that we are financially stable. But it's also looking at where appropriate, we can enhance our offer. So if we did have a new flagship cemetery, it might be appropriate to have some sort of, not chapel because it would be multi-faced, but service space where we could run services. You might want to have a cafe or a sort of facility that people can come and have a drink and reflect at. You might have some sort of florist or appropriate service at the cemetery as well. So it's about making sure that those services are tailored, they are appropriate to the space. They have all sorts of other benefits as well as income generation that you can reinvest. They make, help make the service, the space more accessible to people, you know, providing toilets and other things that people need. And they also reduce antisocial behaviour by having that greater presence of people around the whole time. So it's about being appropriate to what the space is about, but making sure we consider sort of longer term invest to save options as well. I think that was all the questions.
Great, thank you. To my mind, I think a lot of what's in here is about giving the service authority and trust to act on your own expertise. And one of the most important aspects of it is the financial sustainability. Coming back to Simon's point, because we, as a service, we need to be able to invest when times change. And I think that's really important. And I think what the report says will set us up for success for decades to come. I have seen a few indications from a few more people, so we'll take another round and then see where we are. So I'll go to Peter first.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you, Chair. And if we look at page one hundred and ten in the Agenda Pack, we've got theme three, environmentally responsible bereavement services. And if we turn the page once more to page one hundred and eleven, what will we do? Um, we will develop biodiversity action plans for cemetery sites, what success looks like. And, and then we can move to how we will make this happen. It says, align biodiversity improvements with the council's nature recovery strategy and green infrastructure planning. But this council doesn't have a nature recovery strategy. Um, so I'd like to highlight that. Um, there are two things there, one is that now has kind of been overtaken by the mayor or combined authority. They are doing the overall nature recovery strategy, that's still way behind schedule. And I'd urge the Lord Mayor, sorry, the, the regional mayor to get on with it. Um, I'd also like to remind the committee about their decision to establish a task and finish group to deal with the nature emergency. And that was taken in March twenty twenty-three. I'd be interested to hear from the Chair what, what was the result of that task and finish group. So thank you, so that's a question for the Chair. Um, but yeah, I was, back to you, please. I, I'd just be interested to know, um, how, how you can be working with the council's nature recovery strategy when we don't have one. Thank you.
Thank you for those questions. In terms of that task and finish group, that was before I was the Chair, so I'll have to check up on that and get back to you if that's all right. Uh, we'll go over to Mike next.
Yes, thank, thank you for this report. Strategy reports are always a bit on, on the dry side compared to the, the actual plans and what we actually intend to implement. Um, I just wanted to explore a bit further the point that Mary raised about reopening former grave sites. Um, the, the one nearest my ward is, is just outside, which is Ward's End Cemetery, um, which hasn't been used certainly since at least before the Second World War. Uh, maybe even have been taken, taken out before then. And, and it occurs to me with the, the problems it's causing for some members in, in some wards with the local, local plan. Although I notice that Alan's not with us right at this minute. But given that already, there's already been two authorities outside London that have explored, have actually got an Act of Parliament to reopen those. Um, they're, they're disused or former, former cemeteries that with Sheffield being such a large conurbation area up there with Manchester, Leeds, Liverpool, um, that it is something we should be actively exploring. And I'd go a step further on that because as, as I'm sure Peter and Brian know, we've got one-third of our land area in Sheffield that we have no direct control over as a city council. You do in part through me going along to the Peak District National Park Authority. Um, but that, to all intents and purposes, is that, that land is not available um, for, for development or for, for putting cemeteries on. Um, so I think we have to recognise that the pressure on the land area that we do control um, is, is that, that much greater. And I would, I would really urge you to, to explore that, getting an Act of Parliament to reopen former, former sites.
Thank you. Uh, Tony?
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you for the report. Um, I just wanted to touch on, uh, I know we're looking at burial sites and new burial sites at some point throughout, across the city. Uh, and I am concerned about how we're going to go about, can we integrate uh, multiple faiths in cemeteries? Uh, I know the Jewish, I know it's the Jewish faith that are quite different to, to any other faith. And I wonder if that's a possibility where we can sort of incorporate different faiths in, 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 in cemeteries. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, can I ask if any members of the committee, if anybody else wants to come in on this? I saw Mary's hand. No, shall I bring, do you want to come in now then, Mary?
My comment really about, you've mentioned friends groups and communities and I think they're going to be absolutely valuable in terms of looking after our cemeteries. I don't know, because Mike, Mike has mentioned Ward's End Cemetery and there's a great friends groups there and there's some in my ward. But they do need an awful lot of support to become, you know, established. I feel that they, they're adding to that community and they're, they feel they, um, they are doing something beneficial and they, they do need some reward in some, in, in, uh, uh, we need to show them we, we do appreciate the, the work that they do. I think that's really vital, we can't neglect them as much and we can't neglect our cemeteries.
Excellent, thank you, some good and varied questions there. Over to you.
Thank you, Chair. Um, councillor Lee, your microphone's still on. Thank you. Um, I'm going to take councillor Gilbert's points first and then hand back over to Ellie. Um, so on the South Yorkshire Nature Recovery Strategy, as it is now, not the Sheffield Nature Recovery Strategy, we know that that is being overseen by colleagues in different departments, but also in Parks and Countryside, including our ecology team that are working really closely with partners across South Yorkshire. We will amend the wording in the draft. And this has been a long, a long, a long time coming. Um, but I do understand and have oversight of that nature recovery strategy. It is behind. Uh, we are pushing, pushing for that to be completed as soon as possible. And then on the biodiversity task and finish group, um, through this committee, um, the update on that was brought back to this committee on the eleventh of March twenty twenty-four. So there is a report setting out the outputs from that, um, that task and finish group. And that will also, so that's been shared across the council as well because biodiversity is not just Parks and Countryside or this committee. We're also sharing that with colleagues, colleagues in planning, property, et cetera. And that will also feed into the outputs from the task and finish group on the blue and green spaces for the green and open spaces strategy, bring it all together for development. I hope that helps.
Thanks, Lisa. Um, I'll answer all the questions, just to touch on that and absolutely, we can adjust the wording. I think the key message that I want to kind of get through there is about not working in silos, that, you know, we as bereavement services could be quite insular and sometimes are quite insular. We work in a council that has a huge amount of expertise in these other fields and we need to work alongside our colleagues, understanding what the council's committed to in terms of priorities and making sure we're building that into our outlook as well and our future. So I just wanted to be kind of reassure and say that's, that's what we're trying to get across. In terms of reopening cemeteries, and it's interesting, I've got a positive response to the idea of reuse. Um, it's not always the response we get when we talk to people about it, some people are quite terrified of the concept. And I think it's really important to say that the laws around it in the moment are quite challenging, so it would be an Act of Parliament. That would be an Act of Parliament to get approval to reuse graves. And that is per cemetery at the moment, costing in excess of two hundred thousand pounds from what I understand. Um, whereas the Law Commissioning are consulting on the principle of changing the rules around it, which might enable us to do it more freely across the city, depending on what comes in. We looked at this quite closely a year or so ago to see whether it was a direction we wanted to or needed to go down now. Um, and we came to the decision that it, the timing wasn't quite right for us. The rules around how long since the last interment, plus the rules around the grave ownership, meant that the number of graves that would be freed up at this point in time would probably be quite minimal. So it would be a lot of investment, a lot of time and resource, um, for minimal return. Um, so it's something that we wanted to keep an eye on. We're also conscious that, as I say, some people quite like the idea, other people are a little bit resistant. So we'd need to make sure that we were sensitively consulting with people and talking to people about the concept of grave reuse. Um, you know, what happens to the remains that you find, and how that works.
Yeah.
Um, so it's something we wanted to include because we think it's really important. And as I described before, the life cycle of a cemetery, understanding that um, eventually ideally, you, you would kind of go around and have a circular approach to cemeteries. But the timing isn't quite right for us in Sheffield with the graves and dates of death and dates of burials at the moment. Um, in terms of different faiths, absolutely. Um, we need to make sure that our service provision, whether that's burials, cremations or anything else, needs to represent the, the makeup of Sheffield. Um, we intend for all our cemetery sites to, to be multi-faith. Um, you, you're right, Jewish and Muslim and faiths have quite specific burial needs. Um, there is quite a big private Jewish funeral offer in Sheffield, which makes the requests on the local authority much smaller, but we need to link with them. Make sure the longevity of that provision, make sure that we are capturing everybody's needs and, and that is, hopefully comes through in this strategy, but is also very clear in the cemetery plan that we put forward to SNR last, last week. And then the final bit on that is friends of groups. So, um, bereavement services in, in Sheffield City Council, we are responsible for the active cemeteries where burials are still taking place, not the closed cemeteries. Um, we don't have very many friends of groups in our cemeteries and I absolutely believe there is a place for them. Um, I want to encourage them and I want to support them and we just haven't had the resources to be able to do that because it isn't just a welcome and off you go. There's absolutely needs to be a very close working relationship between any friends of groups and the service itself in terms of what the space is about, what it's trying to achieve, what, who's, what people can do to support that. So I really want to see that grow, but we need to make sure we've got the resources within our service to, to support it as well.
I think that was everything. Um, in terms of the friends group, I do wonder if, uh, there is a piece of work that can, could fit under the community's strategy going down the line. Because friends groups are something that we see all over the city in lots of different services. So there's no point reinventing the wheel for every single thing. So I think that's definitely something that we can take up after the community's strategy is brought back to Strategy and Resources next month, I think. So I think that'll be really useful.
Thanks, Chair, I was just going to add as well that there's, there's, there's the joint working as well between Parks and Countryside, which with the exception of a, a few friends groups such as Ward's End Cemeteries, predominantly Parks and Green Spaces, but there is also a lot of learning that we can take from that forum as well that would work in cemeteries too, so.
Great, thank you. And thank you for the report. In my short time as Chair, what, a year and a half or so, it's been really interesting seeing the, the service reinvent itself, I think. And I think this strategy is a good foundation for the next, next few decades. Uh, there's a lot in there that we need to think about as a city going forward, as we heard today about the arguments with possible reuse. Um, the financial sustainability is such an important thing, but it's so good that we're finally seeing that through today. Uh, and all the work through Strategy and Resources as well with finding new land. So it, it finally, it feels like we're making good progress on bereavement services. And it's not just about the speed, is it? It's the direction and I think the service is heading in the right direction with this. So thank you to everybody who's worked on the report and the task and finish group and everything that goes along with it. Perfect. Um, if we've got no further comments or questions, uh, I'll move to the recommendations for approval on page eighty-three of the agenda. Are we all happy with those recommendations? Excellent. Perfect, and that brings us to the conclusion of the agenda today. So thank you again for, for the report and thank you to everybody who's presented today and I'll see you all soon.